Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the school committee for Monday, May 17th, 2021. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And before we start, I would like to turn it over to Sean Gallagher, just to offer condolences and love of silence for tragedy that happened this weekend in the school system.
Yes, at this, at this time, we would like to take a moment of silence and our heartfelt condolences. I'll send prayers with Pam Jameson, an art teacher at the Brezlinian, who tragically lost her 27-year-old daughter in a vehicle accident. You know, I thought some prayers have been with her throughout the week. And this community is, one thing I've learned is people help each other time of need, and Ms. Jameson and her family is going to need that for the next several weeks. So at this time, I'd like to take a moment of silence and we'll look through the center of the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Please stand and give the pledge of allegiance. The flag is there. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a banner of honor for which it stands, one nation under God, equal and free and justice for all. Thank you very much. Mrs. Kennedy, please call the roll.
Ms. Holliday.
President.
Mr. Callahan.
Here.
Mr. Hawke Kaiser.
Here.
Ms. Spaulding.
Here.
Mr. Reaven.
Here.
Mr. Cole.
Here.
And Mr. Mannan.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Mr. Callahan.
Thank you. We're going to enter into a period of public comment right now. We ask that your comment do two minutes or less, and then you say your name and address. Is there anybody who would like to raise their hand from home for public comment? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Next on the agenda is the student recognition, the Mass Association of School Superintendent's Award. And that will be Mr. Gallagher. All right, thank you.
I'm going to stand up and pull my mask down so you can hear the muffled noise here. Okay, first of all, it's a great honor. Every year, as we know, Mass Association of Superintendents is giving an award to a senior that has distinguished themselves and is pursuing with an excellent, strong, consistent academic performance during their entire high school career. This year's recipient of this is Maddie Fasino Maloney. And when we look at all of the different accolades, I just kind of want to read you through this young woman who's an extreme, the accomplishments are amazing. So I'll try to summarize this. So she's received many academic achievements over her career. She's been a high honor roll student every semester, including a gold key in her senior year. She's a member of the National Honor Society for grades 11 and 12. She's the vice president of the National Honor Society. She's taken several AP courses throughout high school along with the dual enrollment at Southern New Hampshire University in the environmental studies course. For athletic achievements, she's involved, she's participated in soccer, cross country, indoor track, and lacrosse. She's the captain of the indoor track team 2021, and recipient of the Sportsmanship Award for cross country in grade 12. In addition to her athletics, she's also performing arts, music, community service and work, fistfacing, community theater, performs the national anthem. We could have used you tonight. At the NHS varsity basketball games and belongs to the small corps group. She volunteers with all of that in her busy day. She volunteers with NYS Leo's Club, she's done the Walk for Hunger, is in the student ambassador for the high school. She works as a CIT at NHS, I mean NYS. She babysits and then has multiple part-time jobs. And she finds time, like three times a week, to fall asleep. So we're really proud of you on that. I just, it's, it's an honor and a privilege to recognize you with this award. It's well deserved and we're extremely proud of you.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Do you want to take a picture with?
Sure.
The mayor, did you want to?
Was it upside down?
No, it's the.
Thank you.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
All right, um, next agenda item is the consent agenda. Mr. Cole, we have the warrants.
Okay, we have three warrants. First warrant, I moved at the following name bills of the new report public schools mounting the aggregate $14,857.01. You approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payments, there are no conflicts. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes.
The next warrant, I moved at the following name bills and payrolls of the new report public schools mounting the aggregate $16,256.51. You approved and forwarded, you approved for the city auditor to make payment and deduct the funds from the school's account, there are no conflicts. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, the motion passes. Number three.
Yeah, and the last warrant, I moved at the following name bills of the new report public schools mounting the aggregate $379,773.54. You approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment, there are no conflicts.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, and the motion passes. Uh, but we have minutes from the February 23rd meeting. We got a motion on that?
To approve?
To approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Holliday.
Page five. As you, we get into discussing COVID, the entry plans, and vaccine discussion. Um, the first comment after a list of bullets, Bruce Bennett inquired has DESI, it's D-E-S-D, not D-E-S-I, changed the protocol. And when you get to the bottom of the page, um, can someone, I'm not sure what this means. Mayor Holliday said she appreciated the overview. This was the preliminary budget presentation and separate out percentages?
Separate out the percentages of the ESSR?
And ESSR is, it looks like ESSR 11, it's actually Roman numerals. Mrs. Kennedy, ESSR is?
ESSR 2?
Two, Roman numerals, not, it looks like ESSR 11 here. So it should be separated out percentage from, if you write from ESSR 2 funding is traditional revenue. I don't know, let me guess, it's from February.
What was the first one made from here?
The very first one was after the superintendent on the top of page five presented the preliminary budget presentation. There's a series of bullets and then a comment from Bruce Bennett on DESI. It should be D-E-S-D in terms of spelling.
Thank you.
Uh, some motion changes to accept the minutes with those changes.
Yes.
Just Mayor Holliday mentioned. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes pass. Uh, next up is our NHS student representative report from the Sierra Lake.
Oh, sorry, keep my mask on.
Don't leave it to you.
You can.
Okay, so, the advanced placement testing started last week and continues into this week and next. Exam students are taking this year include AP government, United States history, psychology, biology, chemistry, physics, computer science, economics, English language, English literature, art studio, calculus, and statistics. The high school will not administer the end test until April June. Last week, the field program showcased student run shows. Amelia Snyder wrote and directed the Five Year Plan. Rory Schmidt directed the short play, Clover. Christian Care directed Avalanche, and Megan Tutton with Olivia Passan directed the musical Book Flowers. The students passed a crew for introduction and rehearsed for over two months. Last week's performances were all well received by viewers. Spring sports are moving right along with many of our teams having a strong start. Here's an update of each team's record. Baseball's four and O, boys lacrosse is two and one, girls lacrosse is three and O, softball is three and O, boys tennis is two and O, girls tennis is three and O, boys spring track is two and O, and girls spring track is one and one. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next on the agenda is the possible vote to appoint the Newberg Fork School Committee Representative from Woodyard Regional Botec, Mr. Joseph Habberland. Am I saying that correctly?
Yes, Habberland.
Hello, welcome.
Good evening. Pleased to be here. Uh, I just wanted to light a little bit of a background on me for those who may not know. After college, I started an apprenticeship with Savannah Lighting. It was a mechanical apprenticeship, and 30 years later, I retired as the manager of all mechanical services for the facility. During that time, I actually had to go to Woodya for mechanic, uh, machinist training to advance beyond a mechanic grade. I spent 14 years in the union and worked as a chief steward and worked on contract negotiations. And then six years later, I was on contract negotiations with a company on the other side of the table. I had a set of training programs and mechanics, because you can't very easily find industrial mechanics, you can find auto mechanics, you can find machinists. But mechanical devices are a bit different than either of those things. So I had to train them, set up stock rooms, basically ran machine shops, it was an assembly shop, did all the mechanical repair shops, lubrication, stock rooms, set up civilizations, and had a very good time while I did it. After retiring, I went to work for Richard Latney in Ames River about the machine for work there, picked up all the facility responsibilities in addition to the mechanical stuff. I think I could do a good job of Woodya because I've always been shooting my mouth off about how important tactical training is, and my wife said, well, it's time to put up a show.
We paid for it.
But if you have any questions, I'd have to answer them.
So we have any questions for staff?
I don't have any questions. I just think, I think you have a great background. I think, um, I think you mentioned you also have grandkids up at Woodya.
I do, I have one that graduated in 2019 from there, two that are currently there, and one that starts in the fall.
I think that's great.
Three different families.
Yeah.
The other, the other family, they have one there, but they're up in Concord, Illinois.
How often do we have local beer?
Once a month, I believe.
Once a month?
Twice a month. Twice a month? They're not more than twice a month.
Oh, the meetings?
Yeah, every year.
Yeah.
I think it's consistent with the typical school committee meetings, meet multiple times a month.
Right, right. My plan, reaching out to the superintendent tomorrow and see if I can sit down with her.
That's a good idea, because then.
Introduce myself.
Sure, because then the city council will also be reviewing your, um, we, we also send information to them, to the council.
Right.
Um, so it's, it's approved by both bodies. But you should be all set to go for maybe the last meeting in June. If not, you'll be ready to go for the summers, if they have any summers, you know.
Right.
I don't know, but then definitely you'll be there for September, so, you know, which is great. So without further ado, I make a motion to approve this.
Can I say something?
Sure.
I want to thank you for stepping up. I love that your background is inherently involved in this. I'd like to ask a favor, and that's if ever given the opportunity. I think sometimes our both schools become a little exclusionary to students who need an alternative to traditional schools. And it doesn't mean that there's a pigeonhole type of students that belongs, but because they often look at attendance and behavior in grades for acceptance, kids who struggle in traditional schools sometimes get excluded from opportunities to go do more hands-on learning. And so I guess the, the favor is if there's ever an opportunity to talk about that, getting the both schools to open up their admission process, I think would serve a lot of people real well.
I think I understand what you're saying in the sense that there are, there obviously are students that can't get in with you because of issues. The limited number of seats available is a problem.
Yeah.
But I also have to say, which I very strongly believe, if it's an academic issue, the member school needs to step up and help create programs for these students that need the extra assistance to meet the grade, it has to be involved.
Absolutely. All I'm saying is that when we consider all of those things.
If I had my way, it'd be two tech schools for every public school. There are not enough seats now, there will not be enough seats in the future. We have to better prepare the kids so that they can be there.
Yeah.
And my, obviously, my challenge is every kid from Newberg Fork should be there that wants to be there.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
So did you pass your motion?
They don't even speak, so that's fine.
Second, that motion.
Uh, this is a roll call vote.
Sure.
Uh, Ms. Kennedy, can we get a roll call vote, please?
All right, um, Mr. Mannan?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Reaven?
Yes.
Ms. Spaulding?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke Kaiser?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
And Mayor Holliday?
Yes. Next one. You're all approved. Good luck.
Good, good luck to those. Joey and Earl.
All right, next on the agenda is policy subcommittee items, Ms. Spaulding?
Yes. So our first item we have printed off here is the public gifts to schools and the committee made the edits that we, we discussed in our last meeting. Did anybody have any questions about those edits? One was the third paragraph. Um, the, the gifts received, the last sentence, gifts received, that it seemed 2,500, used to read 5,000, so we reduced that to 2,500. Um, and then we also added that one to the fifth paragraph about anonymous donations. Basically giving the superintendent the power to accept those. Were there any questions? No, okay.
Um, all right, can we get a motion to approve policy KCD, public gifts to the schools policy?
To approve?
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, the policy passes seven. The next part is communications.
Yes, and that is a completely new policy. I don't think we have a printout of it, but I want to thank whoever printed this one out. Um, I did email it to everyone. Did everybody have a chance to review it? This is just the first reading of that policy. Um, one question we, we were discussing among ourselves is the file naming of these policies. You know how we do like A, A B, A C? Is there a methodology to that, or is it strictly to look at where it should be placed within the policy book? Because we were thinking of this communications policy might go well being named B, C, D, D, and it would fall after our norms of operation. So it would fall in section three.
Does anybody know why we?
No, I think it's a combination of, um, you know, adapting systems that were in place when we did major work with Nick. And, um, some of them, I think, there may be some overlay with masks as well. So, um, so that it's a, the system that we have, whether it works for us or not, it's sort of generally something. But if it's not working, you can sort of modify it.
I guess, I guess policy brought us to some work that I fit, right? You guys?
That's what I figured. I think we even label it.
Yeah, we'll have to try to label it for our second reading.
Okay.
I would absolutely be willing to look into renumbering the whole thing, though. It's ridiculous to try to find anything.
I agree. I do wonder, and I, I was wondering if the person from the district who does the website might want to be included on that, because there might be a more logical way we could serve it up as far as a user interface, so it's not a, a list of PDF files and the person can just see a table of contents, it would be more streamlined.
Yeah, and I think there should also be a one, one, I mean, you could add it as sections of development, but one PDF of the whole book. You're clicking those, downloads and downloads and downs, so, um.
I think I can get that out of your room. Sorry. It's okay, thank you. Oh, does it, does everybody have a copy of this, or if you want me to read it? It's kind of lengthy, it's going to be.
I've got a copy, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with just going back to policy to figure out where you're, you're naming.
Okay.
It's going to be in the back.
Oh, thank you.
Perfect, perfect. I'm afraid you should.
Did anybody have any questions about it? There's a lot in here.
Kennedy, can I ask a final question?
Sure.
Can we talk about this if it wasn't in the packet?
The actual document?
The actual document. We're talking about something that we don't have to read right now, but. Uh, I don't know, I'm just asking. I'm not saying we should.
I would, I would refer that we, we received it tonight and then have an opportunity to do our first reading after everyone has had a chance to read, because there is an awful lot in here, and I just thought.
And it's all new.
And it's all new.
So it's a reaction for our next meeting, there's no hurry.
Okay.
Good.
All right, yeah. Thank you.
All right, so, um, can, Sean, can we try and put this on for them? What's the next one? The one after Memorial Day is the next meeting?
Yes.
Yes. First two.
Yeah. Uh, Tuesday, new verse, we can have that spread agenda?
And policy has one more.
Tuesday, you have it?
One more policy we have.
Six or seven?
Participation, there was minor edit.
For that, communication.
Yeah, this version, and then public participation.
Right, the seventh.
No, the first.
The first is the Tuesday.
Right, because it's Memorial Day.
No, the first is the Tuesday. So the first, the first Monday in June is the seventh, which is where we'll meet.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, all right, yeah. And you guys will meet before that, right? Policy will meet before that, seventh?
We can't, we're not scheduled. Yeah. And that was all we had for today.
Okay. Calendar is in practice, correct?
Yeah.
Um, all right, next item on the agenda is the school committee's meeting schedule for 21, 22 draft, first reading. I was trying to see when, when the school council get together with the, um, school leaders and go over the, you know, initial generic pages, what we want for our schools in terms of the budget. I know that we have November 16th as the, the joint meeting, but I was wondering if we can have a more forum meeting on one of the previous things after they've started to meet with school principals, so kind of a heads up, and see what's going on with whatever their, you know, their wishes may be.
Correct.
And we don't have to end it now, whatever.
If I was, my recommendation is because of, as you know, with the COVID, we didn't have an opportunity this year to present school improvement planning.
Right.
So if we could bring in the schools in the beginning, you know, either October 4th or the 18th, maybe split them, have them present their school improvement plan, because part of that you will see funding and, and the act, that's when it starts to, you know, originate. And then the other piece we'll be doing with the new team is the new development of the strategic plan, which will also incorporate surveys and other things too. So I think if you have those dates, but I think what I would do is maybe structure those so we know ahead of time we'll be doing school improvement planning and then also some strategic planning.
Okay. Uh, the other comment I had, um, this year, we didn't really seem to have an issue, but we passed the budget pretty quickly and sent it to the mayor. I think it would help us if we moved that public hearing back to March 21st, because you never know what's going to happen. We've had some years where we've gone back and forth, and then all of a sudden it's like the last minute, you have to vote tonight type of situation. Um, if, if anybody thinks that that will be detrimental to have the public hearing the 21st of March, it's going to be reported. We know, but I don't know if it'd be an issue, Sean.
Can we just add two public hearings to the budget? Get people two opportunities on the 21st?
Not actually, right, yeah, we'll do both, right? Yep, okay. Those are my thoughts. Uh, anybody else have any thoughts about the calendar?
I would love, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
But I would love to see us take a look at what we've talked about before, putting in some things that we know are going to happen on a yearly basis. Like the kindergarten, like we need to have kindergarten numbers by this time. We need to have superintendent's review at this meeting, that kind of thing, so we can start thinking about it and the public can start thinking about it. I also, maybe it's just in my head, but I think we need to have a public discussion about goals and priorities and planning before the schools start theirs. Because what we've been talking about is that we get a presentation from the schools, and at that point, you think, you know, the cart's already out, horse is already out, whatever is you want to, whatever is you want to use, but we haven't talked to students or parents and says, hey, what do you think we should be including in our schools coming up in the following years?
I think that kind of goes with the earlier in October.
Right, but that's a presentation from the schools already, at which point, I'm saying, like, I think we should talk to the students, talk to the parents before all of that. And if we have a budget forum in February, that's months after the schools have already been planning for their next year. Which I think is one of the reasons why we keep running into this, we've been working on this for months already mantra, which gets us in a lot of trouble every year.
I mean, I think that sounds good.
Past few years.
Well, I think that sounds good, Dave, so, I mean, school starts what, September 5th or something, or 4th? So maybe we can talk about and see when you and the team can pull together for something like that.
My recommendation is when we have, I mean, we have the calendar that we have the draft, uh, maybe part of the retreat, we could outline topics, you know, that I just, the thought I just said.
Some of them you retreat.
Correct. And then the, the other piece, what's really going to guide all of us is going to be the strategic plan. So you are going to get input from the students, the community throughout the next five years, you know, with, when we see the district. And then once we solve that strategic plan, that's, that's where we're going. Um, and so you'll see, I think, a lot of the improvement plan, a lot of the work that's been going on at schools is from the, this existing strategic plan, but there's still unfinished business that will work with the community to add into the, the new one, so. But I, my recommendation would be when we meet in the summer, we can kind of. But I, my recommendation would be when we meet in the summer, we can kind of look at all the. You know, dates and then come up with some agenda items that we'd like to say.
I think also when we publish this, that maybe there's in the second page that what Dave was talking about, when we have the already former calendar from Michael Lukens. You know, we see it as September seventh and then, you know, number one is on the second page. This is what's coming up. Then it's obviously there.
And just one other point of wonder is that we typically didn't meet. Tonight of the inauguration because there is a. Longstanding tradition that the mayor of Amesbury comes to the inauguration in the morning. And then the mayor of Haverford goes to the inauguration in Amesbury that night. And we typically didn't meet, we did the organization meeting at the retreat. Just FYI, it's just been courtesy kind of thing.
So Drew said it's a longstanding tradition, so it's moving after the election. Whoever you are.
Um, yeah, I mean, that's a good question. Anybody else have any comments about?
I have a question. I just hope too, I was answering, I know you've talked about working meetings and different forums. I'd love to bring that to safety one, but I just have a full year to talk about working meetings. We haven't worked it in yet, so. Like I said, I'm, you know, happy with passing the dates of these meetings. We're hoping some retreats can kind of look at some of these and find the places throughout the year that we can kind of. Public forum during certain topics.
What is the, when are we required to vote on by what phase? Just before the first meeting?
I mean, we can, you can vote on the calendar as.
Yeah.
We can always add.
Right, that's that's all. But I think it's such a tight game.
Um, I'd rather not vote just on one alone, since it's the first reading anyway. You go back to your bit, I'll put together the so-called Lukens list of things and send them to you and then the next meeting, we can do the second reading of vote. Okay.
We wanted to try for, oh, you put down some retreat ones, so that's mine. Let me see that, sorry. Try to really just model one day.
All right, anybody else? Any comments or questions about the calendar? All right, moving on to the superintendent's report.
All right, we have. Well, as. Publicly, the governor. So as you all know, the 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 governor came out with an announcement with. The restrictions, the easing the restrictions. And unfortunately, we've been through this before where no one knew we were gonna be easing restrictions. And so we have a commissioners meeting on Wednesday, but just like everything, we're gonna. Take in what the commissioner has to say, look at the regulations that the governor is easing, how it's gonna impact schools, work with our medical advisory. And then make the modifications, just like we have been doing throughout throughout this school year. So we need a little bit more information. I know people are very excited to. Get back to normal and we're in that process. So we'll see what the commissioner has to say and if that's gonna impact. The events for the for the rest of the school year. So that's kind of where we're at. And unfortunately, we're gonna find out on Wednesdays as superintendents are running the district. But even people even left more on the loop is the MIA in athletics and how that's gonna impact. That too. So there's a trickle down effect that we gotta kind of see how it's gonna really have an impact on us or will it have an impact on the schools? So, you know, we'll we'll continue to work with that. Our summer planning, so right now we've advertised our some school positions and extra positions. To work with our students, our team chairs, principals, team leaders, and looking at a lot of the student data, working students and families. Nancy Quarts has been developing our summer program now. And as I said, we're looking for students in the sub separate programs. The penciling in from an eight to one program tutorials, related service sessions will also be in that timeframe. We're partnering with Haverford Youth Services and to identify students and programming throughout the summer. So we're just kind of putting it all together right now. And I just want to credit, you know, Nancy Quarts, her team, liaison, our teachers, and just really working. With the planning. And I really believe that Wednesday, it's been really helpful for us. To analyze our student data, especially at all different classes. So our summer planning in extra help sessions is is coming along very well. The. Our hiring update, so I just wanted to thank the school committee for passing our budget. And including those positions so we can move forward. So since our last meeting, we advertised. Those positions at the district level and also at the building level, we're reviewing applications now. And for some of those positions, we're interviewing, begin interviewing this week. To fill all of those positions, hopefully within the next couple of weeks, which will also assist us. You know, with our planning. And the principals, as I said, with their individual positions through the budget, also working on that hiring process. With new hires, Lisa Etoleto, our new assistant superintendent, came to the district last Wednesday. We got to visit all of the schools. And she was just so impressed with the teaching and learning and her big comment. To me, as we visit all the classrooms, like how engaged our students were throughout the day and their own learning. So that was really great to see. She also plans on a few more days. She's actually coming in tomorrow. But she's been transitioning into the the school system very, very well. And we're excited to have a come along Phil. We appointed him as the business manager, asked him his paperwork. He's a little busy himself. Cause it's budget season, so he's gonna, he has to straighten out the district that he's in, but he will be transitioning also. So our vaccination update, first of all, I want to thank Mayor Holliday and then our board of health for continuing the clinic. From Amesbury to Haverford, Steve Burcom, a maintenance crew, custodial crew, along with the Fred Pottman and Chief Leclerc. And Frank Jettel only did an amazing job. So as successful as the Amesbury clinic was, it just transferred to our clinic in a fantastic smooth. I was, it was great to see. I was there on Sunday and I saw a lot of Haverford families with their older students. Were getting vaccinated. We also sent out a survey to our families. Asking them if they had, if they had enough to have a vaccination to give to children. Not children, I'm sorry, but ages twelve and up. Would a weekend or a weekday be more available for them? And sixty five percent of the families said it didn't matter if it was on a weekday or a weekend. Nineteen percent of those families surveyed liked the weekend and sixteen percent said they would like the weekday. So that's good information, Captain Vicky O. In our medical advisory team, we're seeing if it would be possible just to utilize. The school and just have vaccination for students. So we're working on that now. We're in the process to see if we can make that happen and work with the board out. I think that would also be. A great asset for the community if we can just gear for the twelve and older students. But from my observations and from talking to a lot of people, I think people have been taking advantage of the vaccinations, especially for the age twelve. So that's very positive to see. End of the year activities, as we know, Principal Rowan has sent out her communication to all of. The eighth grade parents and Mr. Wolf sent his communication out to the ninth and seniors. I'll just review some of those, but also I just want to just touch. Based the pre K K end of the year at this time, it's gonna be virtual and all of the classes are put together. End of the year slideshow and they'll have a virtual parent guiding and celebration with a beautiful video that everyone put together. Grade three in the attempt to maintain the traditions in prior years, obviously following safety regulations. Students will be participating in a variety of outdoor activities and students will be in their cohort classroom groups while they're outside. And the PTO is also working with Principal Miller and Principal Sullivan. They're looking to hire a magician who will go and circulate among, I love magician, so I'm definitely be at that. Can't wait for that. I just think it's working with the parents and then, you know, everyone is trying to celebrate the best that they can. And people are just coming together and making things happen. Moment is really taking a different approach, which is awesome. So they're doing a moment wellness day plan, so a lot of different activities, but really geared in the wellness area. So there'll be yoga, there'll be nature walks, the councils are working with the students, they'll have gratitude time with councils. And they're creating chalk geometric symbols and art on pavement. And then they have a modified survivor day, which has been a moment in tradition for years. For the end of the year for the elementary schools. I have, let me just grab the. For high school parents and middle school parents that I have there. But as we know, the middle school, all of the end of the year activities are working with the students in the PTO. The students really wanted to stay together for the eighth grade move up time. So we're keeping all of the students together and then we're going to. Live stream, we'll then try to live stream first, those celebrations at the end of the year. For the parents, if not, we'll record those and then we'll we'll send them out. As part of their last day for the eighth grade, we're going to bring them, kind of have a celebration for the eighth graders. They'll leave us up to the high school. Well, there'll be activities on the football field. There'll be activities, there'll be food trucks, just kind of have the kids celebrate their last day. And Principal Furlong has sent all that information, that communication out to the families. And then Mr. Wolf has also sent his communication out. To his families. And that's all that I know. So we're keeping all of the same traditions. At the high school, a lot of those are also gonna be virtual, working with this senior class. They're gonna have the senior night, so they're still going to do the promenade up that beautiful walkway. And then they're gonna have a senior night, very similar, like on the football field, they'll have food trucks, they'll have activities, they'll have games. The seniors will be really spend the whole time together. And that's been worked out with, you know, the senior class, class officers. And a lot of participation and planning from from the students themselves. Those communications have gone out to all the parents already. And as we said, you know, this is utilizing the guidelines. And it's with the governor changing and changing the regulations, which he will stand. With the commissioner on Wednesday and we'll go from there. But I really believe working with the medical advisory team, working with the administration, the students themselves. I think our faculty and administrators really. Kid focused and doing anything possible to have the end of the year celebrations of pre K, early grade twelve. So kids, we this year, they've accomplished a lot, we've been through a lot and we want to end on a high note. There you go.
I know bigger dropped it on everybody that they knew it was coming, all those good news. Eighth grade in particular, with the kids choosing to be together and no parents. I'm sorry, that Brady Budge episode where they couldn't bring all the parents, the Brady Budge kids had their own play presentation, so their whole family convicts them to mail them. Do you think? One, do you think the commissioner is gonna fall in line with the governor and say, have at it? And if that's the case, is there time to change the thing? The parents could go to eighth grade and if so, we're gonna do that. Well, I'm. I know it's certainly like.
Yeah.
It's too late. But something like the eighth grade thing, it's basically just outside, right?
So.
I've already had people ask me and I said, I don't think anybody knows.
Right, we don't know. Yeah, I think that's a, I think that's a great answer. As that came out today, we'll see what the guidance is gonna be on Wednesday. But they were very, up until Monday, up until today, actually, they were very. I guess strict with numbers and the events, indoor numbers, masks. So we'll say, I think it's, I'm gonna send our communication to our community tomorrow. Just letting them know that the governor is, with the governor's announcement, then with the commissioners. Meeting with superintendents on Wednesday, you know, we'll get more information and then we'll plan for it.
Uh, one just quick thing, I don't think we've got the spot, but going to. One of the things. One of the, one of the announcements was that as of tomorrow, they can have maskless recess. So were we waiting for the commissioner to say, yes, you can?
Yeah, I think, I mean, right now, I think all of our safety protocols are in place. People have, we're used to, I think, a routine. And then we just really wanna sit down with our medical advisory team. We are gonna make the changes and make modifications. We want to make sure we do it systematically, safe. In a sense of, and also planning, we just want to make sure that we communicate the changes to everybody all the time. Not just, you know, the this one says you can do this, this, the commissioner says you can do this.
Unfortunately, the governor didn't call the commissioner first. I'm calling you guys before we go on TV.
Well, I, you know, I'm not a, I'm just superintendent. Where this is something we've been, we've been. Now, this isn't anything new to our community, to us, so I'd say it's not a surprise. But just like when we get these announcements, you know, our community regroup, we do a special visit to families. We'll get this information and if there are gonna be modifications and lifting of restrictions, we will do that and we'll do it in a systematic way so everyone.
And also we need help from the adjustment council. We have a lot of the younger children have, they. They see that mask as keeping them safe and they know that they're not vaccinated, so it's kind of scary for them.
Well, I think that's, that's great. And that's the challenge is that our students aren't vaccinated, many of the adults.
Right.
So.
The initial guidelines are saying teachers will still, and teachers will still wear masks for. Indoors, like during lunch, during recess, they can take them off, is what they're saying at this point. We got another follow up with the president governor tomorrow because there are so many executive orders, there are so many. Emergency orders that were passed. So what does that mean? Does that mean we can't do remote meetings anymore? Does that mean, I mean, it's like, there's just so many questions that are out there. They need some, they need a little time to sort of figure out how we move back to normal, I guess, or the new normal, what we're going with. Right, and and following up with Mayor Holliday is that there is a, on the D E S D website, everyone votes to continue to wear masks. But then you're gonna be, we're responding to rumors and things like that. So we don't really want to make any decisions until we get all wrapped up. We'll just bring it right back to our medical advisory team. We'll implement the modifications and the realistic restrictions with that. But we just really want to communicate that out to everybody all the time.
Um, but we just really want to communicate that out to everybody all along.
Uh, Bruce, I'm thinking.
Well, I just can ask, Mayor, if you have a piece with the governor, he can make the kind of announcements on two things instead of Monday.
That would make it simple.
Maybe I'll show.
No, I just have two things. Um, Sean, we had asked you if you would identify what evaluation tool we're supposed to be using this year. I didn't know, kind of, you know, you have a few things, I mean, but.
We did, uh.
But I know, maybe that's a fair conversation this week anyway, you could reach out to maybe even your regional team and find out if they're using our tool. We'd really like to get that out to the committee members prior to next meeting if possible. So that we can, for one, get your evaluation done on a reasonable time break. And the other piece is just, um, Steve Artcomb did a, a nice job updating our S I, uh, just sent to you before the meeting. And that, um, I believe we have to have school committee and, um, city council approval prior to us submitting that to, back to the Mexico Building Authority. So, um, please read it, get back to me with questions, concerns, and we will vote on it on, I just wanted to give you enough notice, cause you know, it's like a twenty four page document. But it's pretty much the same as our last submission.
What's the fourth one? What's it do again? Then we have to have.
I believe the twenty fifth of June, November two.
Would I have the? Oh, yeah, we have twenty. So, is it, you've got an extra, extra meeting schedule to move into the budget? And finally, I just wanted to let everybody know Wednesday night at six o'clock, the school, our budget will be reviewed by the, in the workshop at school. Budget is Wednesday night, it's, it's a remote meeting.
They're not having one of you?
No, they're gonna say, no, um, they're gonna try it on Monday.
The fall.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, did we have some need questions, please?
Um, yes, we have. I'm sure it's about the vaccine clinic for twelve to fourteen year olds. Will that be open to all residents of Newbury Forest or do the students have to be students within?
All residents, it's, it's actually gonna be a, it's a collaborative, a law agreement.
Right.
Um, regional collaborative, so it's, it, it, we, it's open up to anybody who wants it. Could be somebody from New Hampshire. Does all that. We got plenty of vaccine.
Great.
Alright, uh, Sean, I was gonna, we're gonna kind of take away from the senior week and the, the end of the year activities, that plan's running place right now, but they could be modified. Depending on, depending on the restrictions.
Okay, yes.
Well, it also probably depends on whether you have somebody other contract.
Correct.
You know, you've got a, you know, activity plan and some contracts, something you need to invite all that.
Yeah, there's a lot of moving parts.
Yeah.
Right now.
I was just thinking, the eighth grade is gonna be probably the most similar one, just to a lot of the parents, because I'm sitting in the stands.
No. It's in the gym, yeah. But that gives you, uh, new instructions or, you know, maybe, maybe twelve, nineteen, if that, the last day. Yeah, it gives you a, a.
Um. Pretty good? Uh, next, I don't know, new business, anybody have any new business? Uh, we didn't, we kind of stopped bringing this on the agenda, but we, budget, so, budget finance meeting tomorrow, is that right, Mr. Paul?
Yeah.
Eight fifteen?
I think eight thirty.
Sleep with it.
Uh, budget finance.
I said finance.
I believe that's all. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in bed?
Hi.
Thank you very much, everybody.